I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Kathy Jorgensen and then Reverend Carl Flag will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in going to God in prayer. Almighty and everlasting God, we humbly our hearts before you this afternoon. Dear Lord, we come with an attitude of gratitude to appreciate the magnitude of your love for us.
Thank you.
God, in the midst of all of the storms that we encounter, you are the master of the sea. And we ask you, dear God, to be with these administrators, this superintendent, dear Lord, be with these school board members as they legislate to educate our students. Dear God, we pray for the directors, the principals, the teachers, the support staff, heavenly Father, those in transportation, and all of those who are connected to this Putnam County School District.
Yes, God.
We pray, dear Lord, for connectivity, we pray for cooperation, and most of all, we pray for the passion that this district has and need in order for our district to shine. We know that with you, we can do all things, we can accomplish the impossible, as long as you are leading and guiding us. Give us the gift to discern so that we can deliberate, discuss, and then pull together so that we can be all that you would have us to be. Help this board in spite of all of the fiscal constraints to be fiscally responsible, dear Lord, so that they maximize every dollar that has been sent to this district, dear God, so that our students can excel. Bless this meeting today and bless all of our citizens and help us to do whatever it takes to bring honor and glory to your name. Your servants pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Flag.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna start. Jason Forshee, would you come up, please, to present the Florida Forest Service check to the district? Rick, you want to receive that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Would you stand at the podium? Go stand at the podium. I'm sorry, because no one can hear you.
Yeah, Jason, we want you to come in over here and really get famous.
You can give us a little speech while you're up there.
Okay, okay. Well, I have a check here for the district and Mr. Rick for $14,375. And this is a revenue that y'all get from us, from the Florida Forest Service, from timber sales and recreation fees from our two state forests at Edna Creek and Palaca.
Wonderful.
Do we not, let me ask you another question. Do we not receive any sales from the Ocala National Forest?
No, sir.
Wonder why? That's because it's become a federal?
Yes, sir. We are a state. There are different branches than us and we can't do the same things, but that's a federal deal and we're a state.
We used to get that. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Come on over and we'll shake hands.
Good job, Jason. Thanks.
Next, we have a presentation from Feed the Need, and I'm gonna let Ms. Cummings introduce Megan Lingle to you.
Yes, actually Megan and Denise Brand.
Oh, and Denise too, sorry.
Yes, please come on up. We have a quick presentation for Feed the Need, our program that we've been doing in the schools. I think it was actually in the paper today. Yes, I didn't even have a chance to, I didn't have a chance to read it. Where's our tech guy? We oughta just...
Right. We...
Is there a computer out there?
No.
You want mine?
Let's let Mike...
Okay.
Nikki's always prepared. I love it.
Shush. Thank you. Megan, what grade are you into? 11. She is a junior at Palaca High School. Megan Lingle has decided to take this project on as she is a pageant contestant across Florida in leadership skills, and she has done an amazing job with several events that have been presented to her every time she has come to the presentations of Kiwanis and Rotary and Girl Scouts. She is very well spoken and it's wonderful to have such a student with such talent. So, thank you so much for taking on such a big project. When you're busy doing cheerleading and friends and everything else, it's one of those things.
It'll take a few minutes if they can, and we'll have to go get their order got back and do something else.
Oh. And I'd just like to mention that Denise is also a very, very busy person. Not only is she on the Board of Trustees at St. John's River State College and stays very busy with that, she has a full-time job running a very successful business in Palaca, and she spends an extraordinary amount of time working with Feed the Need, and just very thankful for that.
Yes, she, of course, is part of this program. So, of course Denise has introduced Megan to several civic groups and Girl Scouts, and it's a team effort. I can't even tell you how many people are involved with this program. It's just an unbelievable opportunity. And so, one idea that, and I'll give a quick introduction as far as why this presentation is taking place today, is we were wanting to think about a payroll deduction option for our employees. So, that's why we wanted to introduce the program, so that we have record of what exactly it is, so everybody that has questions would know exactly what Feed the Need is, and so now we can think about payroll deduction as we have different nonprofits. This would be something that stays in-house directly with the school board. So, here we go.
I'd wanna know that. I'd wanna know that.
I just read something about that. It's usually extraordinary.
You better do it, Denise. She'll have you on a golf tournament in Pebble Beach.
Oh, so just for specific organization, what can you find?
How this came about is about six, seven weeks ago, I got a phone call from somebody that husband had got the payroll deductions from Georgia Pacific, and she calls me and says, "How come Feed the Need's not on Georgia Pacific payroll deductions?" And I was just like, "I don't know, haven't thought about that." We've been so busy with food drives and community awareness, the new Facebook page, website, Megan's Goal, you know, and just making this program more community-aware that I came and approached Nikki and I talked to her and I said, "You know, we really need to, you know, this particular person is, you know, picked a group and they're doing $20 every paycheck." And I said, "We have a lot of people that would donate because it's staying right there within their own paycheck and they see the results right within the school." So, pretty much, our PowerPoint presentation will explain itself completely. Okay, great. And I've never run this, so y'all bear with me, okay? Basically, we're Feed the Need of Putnam County Backpack Program. This is a program that started probably about eight years ago. Nikki's been really involved for the last about six years or so. I came on board about two years ago and then Megan teamed with us this past year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. She's a little shy, so... Can y'all read that? Feed the Need of Putnam County, there's like 71, 73,000 people that are, and the food insecurity rates are right at 20%. We have like 570 children under the age of 18 considered food insecure, and 83% of them are likely to, for income eligibility for federal nutrient assistance. Nikki Hawthorne started this PowerPoint, so a lot of these facts that you're seeing is coming right out of our district, right Nikki?
Yes.
That she's put this together. And so, the summer feeding program that she puts together, last summer they fed 35,000 meals to children that were not basically already getting food because they were out of school. So, what are the effects of children in hungry Putnam County? A hundred missed meals. 84% of average household purchased cheap food because they don't buy food that's nutritious for the children. So, the program, we said four years ago, but it's really been in existence for about eight to six. We've really, about the last four years, have come into where we've just really started putting emphasis. Nikki Hawthorne started her race three years ago. This would be going into the fourth year, but she's raised money for awareness for the program. And there's basically 14 schools. We have all 10 elementary schools and four middle schools involved in the program, and there's 50 to 125 kids in each, in each school. We're up to 150 in one of the schools right now. So, the fundraising is a big drive. Nikki raised right at $10,000 last year. We have a lot of food, food drives that have, you know, it's just the community awareness and all this is helping us get food back to the teachers every weekend. These are some pictures from Nikki's race from last year. These are some fundraisers that have been done. The college did a really fill-the-empty-bowl fundraiser, and you got to take home and purchase a bowl made by the artist. Girl Scouts did a fundraiser recently at Walmart this past month that raised a lot of cash and also tangible items. Megan, you'll see Megan up there, she's gone to businesses and approached and told about her platform, which I'll let her tell you about that. These are people that are within our community that are sponsoring us and helping. We have Rotary gives us a check each month. Our Kiwanis Club contributes regularly. You can see Megan out there raising items. So, we are pretty much every week knocking on doors and asking for participation in this program. I developed the Facebook page this year and a website, and that's Kimby. She works for me and she is the face behind it. She's the one that does it. Without her, we could not do that. I don't have time to sit there. But between that Facebook page, it is unbelievable, the people that are, that is, the social network has brought to this program this year alone. These are typical items that were used that are really difficult to get, raviolis, canned soup, that kind of things. We have two feeding partners, North Florida Feeding. They give us what they call the snack packs. We get, how many snack packs, Nikki?
2,600 a month.
2,600 a month free on grant, and they're breakfast items that go out. They come prepackaged. The teachers pick them up from the district twice a month. So, that has been a huge, that's just the second year that they've done that? That's been a big help. Then we have Ways Not Want Not. They are a food rescue out of Orange Park, and I get about two to three truckloads a month of food from them. And it's all rescued. They're open 363 days a year, and they've been a big, and we're one of five backpack programs, but we're in Putnam County. So, they, I feel blessed that they would even consider giving it to us down here. So, how can you help? We ask people to volunteer. You know, the teachers need help packing the bags. We have several schools that could use that. Local promotions, donate. Just a matter, if you have a church that you go to, we've asked that you would, you know, instill that your church set up a box and collect, that kind of thing. These are some of the partnerships that we have to date, and they're continuously growing as people hear about us. And our goals, you know, we have a lot of goals, but these are just a few of them. So, we also have contacts so that people can get in touch with us. And how you can donate, and what we're asking for is that the school board would consider putting us on a line item on the check and that, in the past, for the past two years when I came on board, the cash that I collected went to my church, and then me and Nikki, we would talk about what we needed to purchase. Some things come from my church, some would come out of the district from the race money, wanting to consolidate everything, so we'd all be running under one line item in the district. The collection, the money that I raised from going out and talking to people, Rotaries, whatever, everything would go into a line item in the district and would be spent from there. It's worked fine, but the program is growing, and we really would like transparency where it's coming out of one pot. And so, and that's where the payroll deductions would go to. So, that's pretty much our PowerPoint. I'm gonna let Megan talk for just a few minutes and tell you about how she got involved and why she got involved in the program. And she's been very important to us because she's a fresh, she's not an old face hammering at these young kids and these people. She's out there asking for kids her age to help and give back.
Okay, is it my turn? Okay, sorry. Hi, my name is Megan Lingle, and I'm currently an 11th grader at Palaca High School. I originally adopted this program as my platform in 2012 when my mom was working at Middleton-Burney Elementary School, and I helped her with the backpack program there. And one day, we went to this little girl's house and we were gonna drop off her backpack, and we knocked on the door and nobody was there. But we saw, well, we saw a car there, but no one answered the door. So, I went up to the door and knocked on the door and no one came out. And I looked at my mom, and she said, "Knock again." So, I knocked again, and I saw this little girl peep out through the window, and I automatically recognized her because I saw her in my mom's class throughout the year. And she told us that the car was there, but her parents weren't home because they were working. So, we dropped off the backpack, and once she saw the food, her face just like lit up with joy. And I just love seeing children's faces when they see that they actually have food over the weekend, and I just wanna help minimize the hunger that the children have to go through over the weekends. So, thank you for letting us talk today and show you this call.
Thank you, Megan and Denise.
Thank you.
I wanna mention that Megan is also involved in the musical theater. Was in Christmas Carol and did a wonderful job, and her proud mother is here too, T. Lingle. So, thank you for being here.
One of our teachers.
One of our teachers at CLO, music teacher. Thank you.
I failed to mention earlier, if anyone wants to make a public comment, you need to turn in your filled-out card to Ms. Douglas over here. And we are at that time on our agenda. So, do we have any cards? No public comments?
Oh.
McKinley just got here. He might have.
He's filling one out.
I don't know.
Maybe. Sorry. What to say is anybody?
Y'all can wait on him.
No, no, okay.
Okay, so now, next is the consent agenda. Anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Ms. Gilliard?
Yes, ma'am. E2.
E2.
I came in yesterday. Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
If you've got anything else, tell us.
F3.
F3.
I do so apologize.
G2.
G2.
H1.
H1.
And G2.
And G2. Oh, we already said G2.
Oh, maybe I said it twice. Okay.
So, I have E2, F3, G2, H1.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes. I'm hoping I got it correctly written on here, but I'm good.
We'll cover it again and make sure we're not going anywhere.
Okay, E2, F3. Did I say F3?
Yes, dear.
Okay, got that one. F2. Maybe I didn't say that one.
Oh, F2.
F2.
H1, H2.
Okay, I'm gonna do it again and you check. So, we have E2, F2, F3, G2, and H1.
Yes, 1 and 2.
1 and 2.
H1 and 2?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Buckles?
I came in yesterday, went through the agenda, and I had my questions answered. I would like to ask that Ms. Gilliard quits pinching my arm like my mother used to do in church.
Well, if you would act right, she would have to.
I wanted to speak to G2 also.
Okay. And I wanted to speak to G2 as well, but that was the only one? Ms. Jorgensen?
I wanted to speak to H2, but I also want I1, please.
I, H, I1.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items E2, F2, F3, G2, H1, H2, and I3.
I3 or I1?
I1.
I'm sorry. I1.
She wasn't got two off.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're gonna start with E2. That is deletions from the fixed asset database.
Yes, and I just have a question. And the last meeting, I did get the opportunity to have some questions answered prior to, but this time I do apologize to those directors that I didn't get an opportunity to call you in advance and ask. And I was just concerned, well, not concerned, but just wanted to know, the items that were listed, I asked, are these some of the items that will be sold at the public bid where we're gonna have?
No, ma'am.
I noticed they would mention junk, and I asked, do we get to write off the $72,127.57?
These are normal items that are removed several times during the year.
Okay.
There are not anything we can make any funds during the January 21st surplus auction.
Okay. They're just in that bad of shape that they're just...
Pretty bad shape. Pretty bad shape.
Because I looked at the list and I was kinda thinking, great, there if we could pull something off here or there, you know, I saw more...
Use the parts.
A climbing pole and different things, but...
Our surplus list, we do have some items that have been cannibalized and pulled apart, and you might see the property record number there, but in bits and pieces of them be listed on the auction list. We try to clean it and not have a lot of junk, because if it doesn't sell, we still have to find a home for it.
All right, great. That was just, you know, I just needed that information. Thank you.
Okay, the next item for... Madam Chair? Sorry, I forgot.
That's right.
I make a motion to approve item E2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so now the next item is F2, financial statement for November 6, 2016.
F2?
Mm-hmm.
No, I don't have one for that. Well, I just wrote me a note that I'll meet with Mrs. Oldham to explain to me about the investments.
Okay.
So, no. I'm good there. I'd like them to make a motion. We approve F2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so F3, 2016, 2017 personnel allocations, change number 12 and 12.1.
Okay, my question was, I went through the list and I could put faces and names with some of them, and I was just out of concern, wanted to know who the Department of Information Service, well, the administrator on special assignment, who is that person?
It's a vacant position.
Oh, it is vacant. It's not filled. Okay, all right. I saw it and I just was concerned who it was. All right, so I'm gonna write me a note. Vacant. Do we look to fill it or...
It's an unfunded person. I had given that to him, he's been out on workers' comp and everything. I think if that person comes back, he'll be in a different department.
Okay.
But right now, it is unfunded.
Great, okay. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve item F3.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the next item is G2, the 2017, 2018 academic calendar, and I think several people want to speak to that. But I've asked Ms. Decabelas to come up and explain to everyone the parameters under which they were working. It is not an easy job to come up with a calendar that suits everyone.
It's impossible.
It's almost impossible. So, Ms. Decabelas?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you. I certainly appreciate the opportunity. Myself and four other district administrators, as well as five members from the union, came together to work on the calendar. We had the parameters set by the board to look at coming back to school as early as possible by legislative mandate, and that is August the 10th is the first day that students can return. We were also asked to look at trying to end the first semester prior to leaving for the winter holidays in order to support especially our secondary students in the area of dual enrollment. So, with doing that, you have a very limited number of days that you have to work with. We asked our principals if it worked having the two days of additional in-service prior to the students returning. They said although it is very helpful, they would prefer to have one day prior to the students returning and one day back in October, so that if there was additional professional development needed, they would have that opportunity. We took that into consideration and did put the planning day, or excuse me, the in-service day back into October after the planning day. We also listened to our employees, and they said how important it was to have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So, we left that day in there. You will notice that it does have Hurricane Make-Up Day beside it, because after we discussed before, we do have three possible days that could be used if needed for hurricane days. We do have them listed by number, and you'll notice that October 17th would be the first make-up day if we have not passed that, if we were to need that day. The second day would be January the 9th, and the third would be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And again, trying to be as understanding of what our employees have asked for, and that is to have the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. Unfortunately, because of adding those days in there, it puts us very close to our Christmas holidays, our winter break. But we are, of course, out prior to Christmas, but it does allow us to end the first semester before our students go home. So, that's what the calendar committee had to work with. It's not perfect, but I certainly do believe honestly that this is what is best for our children.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ms. Gilliard, did you want to speak to it?
Well, the reason I pulled that particular one, I just wanted to commend you and your committee for having the foresight to even think about the hurricane days. I did hear some of the concerns the past year when we met with Matthews, but you all had the foresight to look ahead and to put this in, and I just wanted to commend you.
Thank you.
I saw it and, you know, I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
And I just, as a parent, as a former teacher, and I kinda promised that I would at least pull it, because I did look at St. John's schedule. I just, the thought of getting out so late for Christmas is very concerning, so I feel like if I don't at least mention it, I, you know, I know this is a very daunting task. I would just ask that that's October 17th in-service day. I just feel like that should be a regular school day for students, and I don't know, I just, I think it gives an extra day at Christmas, and if we did have a hurricane, then you'd have to, yeah, maybe take the day at Christmas, but I just can't, the thought of getting out so late is very upsetting for so many families and so many teachers. So, again, I just printed out the St. John's County schedule that was exactly like ours except for not the professional day on October 17th, the in-service day. And then that, their schedule would be getting out on the 22nd.
One day before we get out.
Yeah, and I know that that's, to me, that's huge though for Christmas break, and I just feel like, I know that the committee did hard, but, worked hard, but I just don't agree with it, so I'm gonna speak up, because I've heard a lot of, you know, parent feedback. They're already giving us a fit about, because again, it comes down to the board. Oh, the board, board, board decided, so I feel like, well, at least I can...
The board decided?
To approve the schedule. We are the ones. The buck stops with us, so I feel like the calendar committee comes up with it, but the board is the one, and five, I appreciate five union members, but that's less...
Are the union members all teachers that served on the committee?
Yes, they were all teachers.
Right, and I guess, you know...
Were they all in agreement with this proposal?
With the parameters that we had ahead of us, or set before us. Would you agree with that, Mr. Mudd?
Yeah, there really isn't much of it.
Well, and there is one day, and that's all I'm saying, is the professional development day, I just don't think it's necessary, so...
How extremely important was that to the principals? I mean, we...
Any of our principals did talk with us. Several actually had to do votes with their faculties, and they changed the planning day in October this school year to an in-service day, and they have two planning days coming when we come back in January. So, it was something that was very important to our principals.
I know we discussed it earlier, and I appreciate you spending that time with me, and I do understand. Are those, is that required by the state?
We are required to have professional development days.
I know, I just didn't know how many and when and...
We have three.
Okay. Ms. Jorgensen, did you want to say anything about the calendar?
Well, I got some calls, and I'm up here to do what's best for the kids. That's what I tell these parents, and I'm sorry if it's too late towards Christmas or what...
I tell these parents, and I'm sorry if it's too late towards Christmas or whatever, it's, we've determined that it's best for the children, this calendar is best for the children's learning, and that's really all I care about, I don't care about shopping for Christmas or traveling to Illinois or any of that, I just care about what's best for the kids, so I'm happy with it if everybody, well, I'm happy with it, everybody's not gonna be happy with it, I don't care what you do.
Right.
Then we find that our teachers and our administrators work with those parents, that children have to leave if they've made plans.
Right.
So I'm sure they're gonna work with them, and so, so again-
Absolutely.
It will happen in the best interest of our children.
I mean, if they have to go, they can go.
Absolutely.
Yes.
But again, I don't feel like that's in the best interest of the kids if they're missing a day of school, because then I'm like, okay, then they have to make a choice, and the parents, so they're gonna miss, and so it's like-
Well, they were gonna miss, I mean, if it's one day.
I don't, I mean, I don't know, I just feel like, if you're in the best interest of the kids, you have to think about the learning that's taking place in the classroom, and if they're missing the last day of the semester before Christmas break-
It's not our problem, if they're supposed to be in school, it's not our fault.
So as a teacher, right, but if we excuse it, okay, let's give, for instance, oh, it's a family holiday, it's an unexcused absence, they're missing a semester test, so then not only-
The principal determines, can't they determine if it's unexcused?
Well, either way, they gotta take it when they get back.
But the principal, the parent has the option to work with the principal to formulate a solution that's beneficial to the child, and a child that goes to Illinois or wherever, hypothetically they're going, may learn much more about our nation or our things in general than they would sitting that one day in class, not saying that's not what it's intended to be, but that'll be up to the principal to assign additional work or whatever.
Yes ma'am.
So I have full confidence in our principals to do that.
Absolutely.
Well, I just wanted to say, regardless of what we do with the calendar, not everyone's gonna be happy.
I agree.
You know, I wish there were, I wish we could get off the whole week of Thanksgiving, but when I taught, for the most time I taught, we only got off Thursday and Friday, so, you know, I was thrilled when they started getting Wednesday off, and I could finish cooking and get everything ready for that Thursday. You know, in a perfect world, we'd get off on a Tuesday or a Wednesday before Christmas, or we'd be retired in a perfect world. But, you know, our job as board members is to do what is best academically for our students.
And you can guarantee that no teacher is gonna have academics on Friday, it's gonna be a Christmas party and movies all day. I mean, academically, it's-
Elementary school.
Academically, they're gonna get the test done, because if the kids miss them, which the majority of them are, I don't know, that's just, I'm not voting for it, but that's my opinion, it's not academically best for the students.
They wouldn't be allowed to attend a party if the principal didn't feel like they had reached a level to do it.
That's not reality, but okay.
Okay, well, as a principal, I'm just telling you what I do.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying that if you look at the-
You're one of my students, I let you go.
I know, and we had lots of parties.
Let me finish, you know, I wish, I wish we lived in a perfect world, Kathy, where none of us had to work or educate students or all those things we have to do, this is, we asked the calendar committee to come up with a calendar that we could try to finish before Christmas break, and that's what they've done, and, you know, if, I thought that one day would make the greatest difference, I mean, I would be for that one day, but apparently the principals have decided they want that day for in-service, and they don't want to give it up, and to give us a day, getting out a day sooner. You know, and this is just one of our initiatives, to try to increase graduation rates, to, and I'm not saying that one day's gonna make a world of difference, Nikki-
Right, I know.
But it's all those things together, and I think we need to give it a chance, I do, and, you know, I wish it were different, but it's not.
And we may at some point discuss the starting times, and I've always felt strongly about that, but these principals are now being held to their job performance and whether they get rehired or not, based on what kind of a program they can put together, so, you know, I've got to, I've got to have confidence that superintendent has adequate, you know, support for his principals, and that's where I'm going with it.
So there were no principals that didn't want to give up that day?
I can't say that there were none, but I can tell you that it was very important to them, that that day be put back into the calendar for in-service in October, so that they would have time to work with their staff on needs that they saw going on during that first nine weeks.
We first started discussing this two semesters, the semester before, back in the nineties.
Yes ma'am.
But then it was, oh, you can't, and we finally are here, even the state legislature realizes, this is where we need to be, and like I told the parents that called me, they were elementary school kids, and I said, you might not understand it yet, but when your children start changing classes and have different subjects and finals in each of these subjects, you'll understand why we have to do this for their sake, so.
I'm just curious also, have they thought about the in-service day beyond, was that even a consideration to have the in-service day on December twenty-second instead of October?
The only thing that they asked was that it would be closer to the end of the first nine weeks, so that you had an opportunity to provide additional support.
Yeah, that would've been a good idea.
So that it couldn't be in the second nine weeks.
Because you do have an in-service already planned in January.
Right, when they get back from, well, the end of the month, okay, so basically, I know, I just, again-
Well, and I appreciate the fact that you've really looked at that and tried to-
Yeah, I just-
-come up with a different solution.
Yeah, I felt like I needed to spend a little time, and not that I do appreciate the union and the representatives, but again, we no longer have the calendar committee to where it's one person from every school, and I feel like that was very well, I remember as a teacher, we had options and we voted, and it was a big deal, because you had each person at the site on campus asking their employees, vote for A or B, so I felt like the buy-in was a lot easier, because everybody had an opportunity to vote.
Right, I wanted to ask you about that, because we used to have a couple of options.
So that's no longer, yeah, so it's not long, now it's ten people, and I don't agree with that, ten people.
Well, what happened to our couple of options? Is it just that there were no other options?
Pretty much that's what I'm saying.
There are other options.
When there were options put forward to the faculty and staff, there was a, there were options for when the start date would be, the recommendation or the request from the school board has been to start on August tenth.
Right.
If you ask for that, and you ask for the end date to be, for the semester to be before the holidays-
There are options, there's three, I just gave them to you.
They're limited.
Well, they're limited, but there's options.
Sure, yeah, but they're not like they used to be, the, before the options would've been-
Yeah, I understand.
Wiggling when the start date is, when, you know, that kind of thing, the only wiggle room is that in-service day, that's it.
Exactly, and that's all I'm asking for, do you reconsider that? Because parent involvement in this county is a huge problem, and when you take away family time and you take away things that are valuable and family traditions, I don't agree with it. I think that parent involvement in our schools is one of the biggest problems we have, and this is one simple day that is gonna help parent involvement increase, and I don't feel like they could re, you can look at this again, and, I mean, ten people deciding, oh, this is our only option?
Ten people didn't decide this is the option, this is a recommendation from the committee.
Ten people.
This board will decide whether this is-
Right, okay, so that's what I mean, ten people brought this recommendation.
Can I make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation and go ahead and vote?
Aye, second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, so the next one is, just a minute, let me mark that off, eight one, proposal to extend school hours at Jenkins Middle School. Okay.
It's not gonna be painful, Mr. Heskey.
How are y'all doing?
Not painful at all.
I don't know, that's pretty painful right there.
That's a real question.
Just, just real quick, I was, I was concerned about parent notification, them being involved in it, and the tardies for those that don't make, I mean, what you're attempting to do here is great, I mean, I commend you for it, but I'm saying, what, what do you have in place for these kids?
You want me to go over some of the data that I have?
Yeah, explain the rationale.
Okay, all right, average tardies to first period right now are seventeen, earlier that was right at thirty-five, and so what we did, we don't write referrals for kids being tardy, because a lot of times it could be their parents, but what we do is, after the fourth one, there is consequences for being tardy, in other words, lunch attention, which they can go and use that for academic time and study time and so on, and also after school. So, the buses arrive at anywhere between seven-ten to seven-thirty-five, we unload them at seven-twenty, okay, so ninety, ninety to ninety-five percent of our students are at school at seven-thirty-five, okay, and we plan on starting at seven-forty. Teachers for this, for the seventh period, and we're doing this because of the academic data tells us this, seventy-seven percent of our students, our teachers are for this, twenty-three percent are against it, okay, and I think the teachers that are against it are basically because of the change, you know, making that change at this time. But here's some of the numbers academically, why I even approached this, last year we had what they called critical thinking first period, but it was only critical thinking, that's where the teachers saw the kids every day, but it was critical thinking was only class. This year we've made a master schedule where we had a variety of classes, have algebra, English, all of them, there's twenty-seven classes. The number of students with Fs the first nine weeks in a first period class, where it meets with the kids every day, is thirty-seven. The average number of students with Fs through second through seventh, which is a block schedule now at that point, is forty-nine, so that's a difference of twelve. So you can see the academic reasons why we're doing that, that means there's twelve more kids getting, receiving Fs in those block classes, and a block class is basically a college schedule, and our kids, and I really wanted to do, to take a good look at it the first nine weeks, to see, can we make adjustments, can we help those kids out to make sure that they're academically successful? We did a lot of different things, but you can tell with that data right there that there's, that's a difference of twelve.
Randy, just to clarify, the first period class met every day?
Yes, yes.
And the other classes met every other day?
In our schedule, first period meets every day, so those teachers get to see those kids every day.
Right.
And so, and it's a different, a variety of classes, it's not like one class, there's a different variety of classes, electives and all their cores, so that's a difference of twelve. Now, there's a diagnostic test that we give, that we just finished giving, that's eye-ready, that sees the growth in these kids, so I did the numbers on that, and the percentage of students reaching their target for language arts in first period was fifty-four percent, and that's a year and a half worth of growth in a half a year, which is wonderful, but fifty-four percent of those first period made that. Percentage of students reaching their target in the block periods is thirty-eight percent, so you can see, you see the difference in that, and some of the teachers, I've asked them when we've had these meetings, I said, why do you think this is, this is going on, and what's happening here? And the teachers feel like, it's just good that we see our kids every day.
It's that sustained good.
I've talked to parents, and parents feel like, sometimes the kids get confused, because you're on a blue and a gold and blue and a gold, if you're organized, okay, but you're twelve years old, you don't write that down, you come to school Monday, Mr. Heskey, what, where do I go today? They ask me, and I don't even know, I'm not, so I say, hold on, I'll call on the radio, and you're on a blue day or a gold day. So the kids don't even prepare themselves from one to the other, and that's part of it, and they're not doing it on purpose, it happens with a twelve or thirteen years old.
I think the block schedule's tough for a high school kid.
It is, but, you know, so that's one of the reasons why we're asking, and the reason why I'm asking now, why would we wait a whole nother year when we're, a half a year when we're, when this is going on, you know, so that was one of my points. And finally, the difference in math, a percentage of math students, which this was for the block, percentage of math students with the eye-ready that show was twenty-three percent in first period, so twenty-three percent of the math hit the target. Now during the block, twenty-nine percent of the kids hit the block, so that's an opposite type thing, I don't, that's not for the seventh period day, that's actually against it, that some of the kids did that, and that's only a difference of six, where the other one's a difference of sixteen. So that's the reason why we've, you know, when I've talked to teachers and asked their input, because really, being a school that struggles, we need to look at every advantage I possibly can to get the kids and the teachers in the best position that they can be successful, so that was a whole purpose of it. I realize that there's some parents that might have a problem, but the way the schedule works out, which Ms. Whitehurst helped us, she looked at it, we had our Beth Leary, our assistant principal looked at it, I looked at it, we have a homeroom that lasts from seven-forty, we start now at seven-fifty-five, so we're talking about seven-forty. The end time, I can't, we can't work with that, because it's just our buses come and go, and they go to other, and I don't want to affect what others do, so we're talking about starting at seven-forty to seven-fifty, homeroom, ten minutes, that's breakfast, announcements, and so on, and again, we're not gonna write referrals for kids that are tardy, but there will be consequences, you know, we will work with them on that. So anyway, that's our proposal, you know, and don't even know that we'll go to it, but I knew I had to come through y'all, and I wanted to let you know why I was thinking about doing that, so I'll answer any questions at this time.
Go ahead. Um, is transportation gonna have to be shifted?
No. No ma'am.
So, do the kids eat their breakfast in the classroom now?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Now they do?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
See, and he said the buses are there, sometimes the kids are just sitting on the buses.
There's probably, there's probably an average of about ten, ten buses that are already there before seven-twenty, that they, they sit, they leave the kids on the buses, so they're supervised, and they let them out at seven-twenty, so I'd say anywhere from ninety to ninety-five percent of our kids are already there. Now, it will be an inconvenience, it will be kind of tough on some parents who are dropping their kids off, but we have some dropped off at six-thirty, they're there at six-thirty, because their parents work, they have to drop them off, and we still, we watch them, you know, which we would do, but I could see where some parents would have some issues with that, getting to there, but really, I'm not doing it to inconvenience them, I'm doing it for the academic.
Right, I really commend you for having the foresight to do something different.
Randy, will, go into a seven-period day, will your teachers get a planning period during that seven-period?
Yes ma'am, they are, it will not affect the schedule at all, we'll just, they'll have their planning period, and it'll be forty-nine minutes long, where, or forty-seven minutes long, and then they'll get their planning that they normally get after school and so on.
Okay, so they're not gonna have to teach an additional period?
No, no ma'am, there's no, wouldn't attempt to do that.
Okay.
Well, I do appreciate everything you guys do over at Jenkins, my granddaughter Molly keeps me over there quite regular, but I would like to make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the proposed, a proposal to extend school hours at Jenkins.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is passed.
Great.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, next is item H two, correct?
Yes.
That is an agreement with U Chicago Impact LLC for the five essentials.
Yeah.
Yes ma'am.
I tell you what, a lot of pages and a lot of work, looked like it went into it, and I just had a few questions just to ask, just for me, I kept reading, trying to see what the five essentials were, if they listed them, and, and my question is, will it be done online, how will we assure, making sure that our students take it seriously, what happens when the reports are received, and how else does U Chicago assist us, and did we see if any other districts were using it or utilizing this, and I did get one of my questions answered, that it will be taken care of through-
School discretionary funds.
Yes, yes, and the grant, if we get the grant for school improvement, and then you said the cohort, et cetera, et cetera, so, I mean, just a thorough job, I just wanted you to kind of give, give us a little condensed version of what it would look like.
The five Es, all schools participated in last year, the five Es are rigorous instruction, they're not Es by the way, just, okay, just so you know, supportive environment, rigorous instruction, effective leadership, collaborative teaching, and involve families, so it's the five pieces that are measured. It is online, teachers take the online assessment that answers certain questions, and students in grades four through twelve take the assessment online as well. We did use this as part of our request for SIG four grant, which we are in the process of, hopefully in the last stages before we receive, if we get to receive. U Chicago is actually something that the state of Florida is, the contract is with the state of Florida, and that they have allowed us to piggyback onto them, so the more of us that go into doing the contract with the state, it drops the- So the more of us that go into doing the contract with the state, it drops the fee. So it actually is a reduced amount because of all the schools in Florida that are participating. And so every district is given this opportunity to participate. It does help with writing grants. We should get the information by the end of March. The students will take, the students and faculty will take the assessment or the perception data between, I think it's like January 25th to February 25th, or something like that. It's a month long.
Okay. And I saw where some, some of the schools' parents would be surveyed, but not all the schools. Why, why is that?
We only, we only had one school last year that failed to get the required amount of participation from staff or students. And so, but we had several who did not get it from the parents. And that is, again, it's online, it's a little bit harder. We had four schools that wanted to invest their money, Price, Mosley, Browning, Pierce, and Palaca High School.
And Mosley.
Yes, who wanted to invest another $200 to get the parent portion of it. If the parents do not take that portion, it doesn't affect the five Es. It's a separate, it's separate than the five Es, it's just an additional piece. You will get a parent survey that is given out by Title I. And even these schools that have participated in five E by parents, they'll still have to do the Title I assessment as well.
Okay.
All righty. Okay, I read this very carefully. I had our attorney read it because there was a clause that said, both parties' attorneys have read this. And I don't think Charlie's found any problems with it, but this is what I see. University of Chicago is collecting data, and they want our data. They want our data. They're going to provide us with the results of our data, which I don't know why we can't do. Now, our data's going to be melded in with all of Florida, and then with all of the United States, et cetera. But we're paying $28,000 for this.
It is $1,500 per school. And, and so when you kind of break it down that way, it is like $1,548 per school.
Right, and what do we get?
Well, what you get is the University of Chicago did a very large study regarding their successful schools, and the indexes of the success or the rate to move a school out of, in this case, we'd be looking at our differentiated accountability schools, or schools that are in need of improvement. And if they are, if they are positive in three of these areas, they should be able to move forward. So the principals used the data last year to determine what areas they would work with in their school improvement plan. So in their school improvement plan, they've targeted the areas from the teachers and from the students that were poor performers in here, based on that perception data.
My question is, why can't we feed our own data into our own system and come up with the same answers?
Because we don't have access to the questions that they, and what they're really looking for is the state of Florida. We have to transfer who is our, who are our teachers and who are our students. Because when you log in, that's how you get that login, how we feed the, the data to you so that you can take it. So when you log in, you're a student at this site, and you can push that data. But that's really what this is, is so that we upload our data. They take, the state actually already does it for us. But there's an agreement that we will transmit our data, which is the student and teacher data, so they know which teachers are at what school, because that's how they're going to feed the data back to give that perception data to the school.
I understand all that, but we're paying twenty-something thousand dollars to give them our data?
Last year, no, we were paying that money for the results of the survey. And last year, when we came in before we actually did this, and last year, we paid for it out of District Title I. That was one cost. This year, each individual school is paying for it. Now, the grants should pay for it, but the grants are being pushed a year back, so they're not going to pay for it this year. So if we get SIG4, they will continue to take the five Es, because it's mandated in the grant that you will take it, but it will be provided in part of that grant.
I also see this as one more things the teachers have to do. Just one more thing that we're putting on, and the students.
Well, I will say that last year, it was not very hard for the schools to get the data. You take the kids to the computer lab. At this point, we're one-to-one in most of the high schools and middle schools. They open up a Chromebook, they take the, the survey, it's a click link on the desktop, and you go on. It's not that hard, it doesn't take more than twenty minutes. Last year, when we brought you the data back, because Mosley came and spoke to you about what that data looked like, you were all very impressed with the data and wanted access to it. And so it is the same exact data from last year that we collected. It will be different perceptions, because remember, our principals looked at the data that came back. They targeted something for their school improvement plan. I would hope to see that when they get that perception data back this year, where they've looked to improve, they have improved. But if we do not collect the data, you will not know. And if we do not collect the data, it's really hard to write grants if we don't have data from students and staff.
Give me a sample, I can't quite remember. The, the data we're talking about is the one like, do you feel safe at school? Are you bullied? Those kind of questions?
There are some of those questions, but the supportive environment would be, my teacher asks me difficult questions and requires me to answer them. My, I mean, it's, there, a list of them, I can provide them to you guys?
Yeah, I just, right.
And I really can't...
And we used to do it ourselves, I, okay, this is the same one.
It's not, it's not the same one as Title I.
Right, it's different, but...
It is different, and I can provide you a list of questions, but we couldn't answer those questions. We could not copy those questions, because they're copyrighted, therefore, this company.
I know.
So, so when the administrator receives this information back, he or she can then go to their staff or their learning communities, and they can actually say, this is what it shows. We need to bump up our rigor and our questioning, et cetera. So it opens a line of dialogue as to what they need to focus on.
And it actually is directly linked to school improvement plans in the state of Florida. These five areas for support to grow is directly related to those school improvements.
We've been, we've been doing needs assessment data for years for our school improvement plans, so it's just another form.
Right, but it used to be federal programs, and we didn't pay for it. This is the first, this is the last year.
Hey, you paid for this, for this is actually the third year.
Right, but I mean, before that, and Deborah could answer that, because I know for sure, I looked into this last year, before this new UChicago.
The only school we have more than one year of data for is Mosley, the SIG3 school, because we needed to write it so that we could get the grant.
It's a different survey, though, you're not answering my question. We always have done a survey.
It is a different survey than what was given for Title I.
And if the old survey from Title I was free, or didn't cost, okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
But it was not related to the data that was collected.
They weren't asking the same questions.
University of Chicago is a big vendor. They gather information and research, and they put out curriculums.
That's right.
And I've seen Putnam County spend as much as a half a million dollars on the University of Chicago math program. So it is not uncommon to deal with the University of Chicago programs. But the state has them set up as a vendor, and I, I just don't see how she's going to get around, or the principals without doing it.
Well, I, I will say, we just wrote the grant for SIG4. We are one of nine schools that had a phone conference for the final part. Had we not had this data for Mellon, Jenkins, or for Palaca High School, we would not be in the running for that, what, $4 million grant?
If we gather the money, they're not going to take our survey. I mean, we gathered the survey, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that's true. One other question, the parent feedback, I know that was a big problem, the, having, how many did you end up? What was the district-wide parent feedback?
They had to have twenty percent of parents, and I want to say, we, and I'd have to go back to verify this, but I want to say we had all but six schools reach that marker. But it was, was very hard. In fact, one of the schools that did not mass, did not get the student responses, they did get the required number of parent responses. So, I mean...
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm just saying that, that was a difficulty, but you do have four schools that, even though it was difficult, they still want to get that data.
And so student, you want parents, twenty percent students, what's the goal?
It's in here.
Well, you'd like as many as you could get.
And then teachers, yeah, but I mean, there should be, for the data to be, you know...
Yeah, but it's more than twenty percent for the students. But it's in the, it's at least fifty percent of the students, and at least fifty percent of the stu, uh, teachers.
Teachers, okay.
Mr. Superintendent, isn't this your recommendation?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept it, and, but that'll be up to the rest of the board.
Second.
I just don't understand why we can't do this ourself.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The motion has passed. Okay, and then our last one is I-1. Data sharing security agreement with Office of Student Financial Assistance.
Okay, I'm concerned with this, particularly about, on page four, that we're responsible for informing authorized representatives, for example, high school principals, of their duty of oversight for security of this data. At a minimum, all authorized personnel who have access to this data should be informed of the confidential nature of the data, the safeguards required to protect, and the sanctions for non, potential sanctions may include criminal charges as well as other things. And I just want to know, are we set up that the people who have access to this data have the training required? So we're not criminally charged? I'm kidding with that, though. There's other things.
So this is all part of our graduation initiative? If we can start truly knowing which students have completed their FAFSA? That's the first step in them getting into colleges, universities, is they have to get that, that completed. But because it is, it's something that, that involves confidential information, we as a school have no way of knowing unless the student says, I've completed it. So this is just going to simply give us information on which students have completed it, and then allow us the right to sit with the students and help them complete it if necessary. The only people who will have access to this information will be school administrators, counselors, and graduation coaches. They already have access to secure data anyway. And, and they will be, when we start getting this information, they will know how to make sure that it stays secure and confidential.
That was my concern, that it wouldn't put a burden on us.
No, ma'am, not at all.
Great, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve item I.
Second. A second, now, Miss Gary, you want a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Okay, so now, we are on M, item M, emergency session. So we're going to go into emergency session and discuss the three items. The first is item H1, approval of revised support salary schedule. Justification, explanation, performance pay language added.
You said H1, it's M1.
It says item H1 right here.
Oh, that sheet, yeah, that's...
On the emergency.
How about that? Okay, I stand...
So it should say...
I'm sorry, I found a clear, clear.
Okay.
Did anybody notice on this? So it should say M?
M1.
Okay.
She don't throw me something that may improve her aim, man.
Ms. Jordanson?
Change that's taking place, assistant, principal, assistant principal on the performance pay schedule will be awarded the following increases and adjustment. Does anybody realize that's 25 cents different?
Yeah, we all realize it.
25 cents.
Between highly effective and effective, yeah.
Wipe it.
And just if I could give a little bit of information, when we reached the agreement on the instructional side for pay for performance, H6975 or H70, we as a district agreed that we would do the same for our site-based administrators, that if they were effective, they would be eligible for the H6975. If they were highly effective, H70. Our auditors brought it to our attention that that was not spelled out on this particular document. So that's why it's coming to you as an emergency item.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve...
Second.
M1.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item M1 has been approved. The next item is item H2, personnel...
M2.
Oh, that's it?
M.
I'm just reading what's on here. Sorry, item M2, personnel allocations for the 2016-2017 year changed 12.2. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
I'll make a motion, will you approve item M2?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item M2 passes.
We did that, so we're out of emergency session.
Oh, oh, for one?
Yeah.
Okay, so what about the org chart that was added? Is that part of the emergency?
No.
That's new business.
No, that's new business.
Okay. Okay, we're out of emergency? Quit laughing at me. Onto item N, discussion, under discussion, there's no unfinished business. Next, new business. We have several items, five in fact, under new business. And the first one is discussion input and approval of budget amendments for October 2016. Can we do October and November together, or do we have to do them separately?
It is make...
Okay.
Okay, we'll start with October. In the general fund, we had an increase in revenue. As you all know, our charter school money for PICO comes into the capital project funds, but DEWE makes us transfer them into the operating fund to pay out to the charter schools, because capital projects can't have an object with a 300. So that's why you see them in both number seven, general fund, and the same duplicate amount in number eight, capital projects fund. So in the general fund, like I said, we've got $11,753 for PICO for the charter schools. We got Frank Oliver Jr. Endowment donation, $3,500. We got a refund from the Palaca Gas Authority that we refunded to the Transportation Department of $91432 for a total increase in revenue of $16,16732. In the capital projects fund, we had the $11,753 of PICO charter school money coming in. And we had a PICO revision amount, a small increase over the amount budgeted for PICO dollars for the district of 2,0384, for a total increase in revenue of $14,137.
Excuse me, Ms. Odom, is that for charter schools?
Not the second amount, not the small amount.
It's just coincidental that the $11,000 is the same amount of money.
No, that's why, it comes into the capital projects fund as revenue. Then we transfer it into the general fund as revenue and pay out to the charter schools.
Okay.
So it'll always be an equal amount.
It's showing as coming in twice.
Right.
And then going out once.
Yes, ma'am. And that's the way DEWE has us account for those dollars that belong to the charter schools for PICO funds. In the special revenue fund, we had an increase of revenue of $1,908,27331. That included Title III Part A, $5,027. Title I Part A, save balance of award there. Last month, you saw a large amount coming in for Title I Part A that was put into the budget for all the school-level expenditures. And the office federal program sent us the balance where to budget it, and so we brought that in, $1,781,263. We received Title X Part C, education of homeless children, $95,7443. And we received a state personnel development grant for Putnam County, $26,238. Moving forward, number 11, internal service funds, those are NEFEC funds. They had an increase of $1,505,570. They received the Governor's Teacher of the Year Summit Award of $50,000. Gilchrist County received the TIF grant, $1,030,430. And we received, NEFEC also received a state personnel development grant for $425,140. And there were no changes in enterprise funds, which are also NEFEC. So that's the October budget amendments.
I make a motion to approve item O1 as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item O1 passes. The next is discussion input and approval of budget amendments for November of 2016.
Okay, I won't go into the detailed explanation on line item 13 and 14, the PICO charter school. You'll see it's the exact same amount every month that we receive in those funds for the charter schools. And so that was the only revenue, additional revenue coming in general and capital. School food had no change in revenue. Special revenue, we had an increase of $410,55603. That included Title VI Part B, rural education, known as REAP, of $183,371. Title III Part B, improving language instruction grant of $88,91603. Title I Part A, school improvement grant, had a budget increase of $123,444. And Title I Part A SIG had a budget increase of $14,825 over what originally budgeted. And there were no increases in revenue in either of the NEFEC funds.
I make a motion to approve item O2.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item O3 passes. The next one... Any opposed? Item O3 passes. The next one is the discussion input and approval of contracts for childcare entities wishing to use the district transportation. Charlie, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so last meeting, we were wondering if the board approved the new framework where entities who were not connected to the district would be required to pay for transportation if the district transported students to, for example, a daycare facility. And the board had in fact voted to go to, across the board, everyone is treated the same, and everyone would be charged to reimburse the district for the cost of that transportation. And the board approved of a methodology to determine that cost, and the contract, the draft contract was sent to, I believe, and Pam can correct me if I'm wrong, but the draft contract was sent to the district, and it's just a matter of putting the final touches on it, and it will be sent to the daycare centers who are affected. And in essence, what it will be is, Rhonda was very helpful in determining a methodology of what is that cost per student? And that is the amount that the daycare center will be charged depending on the number of students that the district helps transport. And if you have any other recommendations or concerns about that, please let me know, but we're very close to a final contract that is identical in form to one that the district was already using with the charter school, and we will have that done by the end of the year.
And this is in regards to the gentleman that has been coming? So this will let him know that we honored what we promised him we would do.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Yes, and I just want to point out that the charter schools are only charged half. We take our transportation costs and we divide, well, we take what comes in for transportation, then we take our costs and divide it by the number of students we transport. And it's 700 something dollars a student, and we get 300 something a student for transportation. So whatever those exact numbers are, Ms. Odom has been charging the charter schools half of the transportation cost because we don't get it, and it's only fair it comes to us. And now with these daycare and whatever they are, we don't get any money for those children. So we're charging them, the board agrees that they need to pay our, our transportation costs. So that's just for clarity, and I think we're on our way. We don't have anything to approve, but we may at our next meeting, or the one after, or whatever. But it's rolling so that we can stand by our word of doing something. That's good.
So we don't need to make a motion?
No.
Next is discussion input and approval of our new organizational chart, and I think the superintendent.
Yeah, thank you. We just wanted to submit to you our organizational chart. We have the three assistant superintendents, Ms. Odom, Mr. Bowlen, Ms. France, and each of the departments that answered to them. And that's also good for you. If you have a question about anything that's on the agenda that deals with any of these departments, you can go directly to one of the assistant superintendents and try and streamline the process for you. So I submit that for your approval.
I just had one question about the acceleration opportunities and special projects. Would that kind of be the grant writing in the Cambridge, or what, I wasn't sure if that was?
What the special projects are?
Yeah.
Yeah, recruitment, and of course, she's over Cambridge, or oversee in Cambridge.
Okay.
You didn't go back into the files and look at the behavior records of Thomas Bowlen when he was in elementary? Proud of you, Thomas. Congratulations.
You can't be too bad with the daddy he has.
His mom and daddy kept him in line, I can tell you that. I make a motion, we approve the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
I'd like to say something before, no, you can make your second, but before we vote.
Okay, discussion, yeah.
I got a NEFEC organizational chart, and every employee's on it.
Oh, wow.
Ms. Odom has not a chart, but she has, from this chart on, every school, and all the employees' names and positions and all that. So she was gonna, will you share it with all of us?
Sure.
Then I'll be happy to approve this as an administrative organizational chart. But our organizational chart is 1,600 people or something, and I don't expect to fit it on a piece of paper.
Yeah, but it would be nice to know.
It would be nice to know. And you can also see unfilled allocations. In other words, we've allocated, and there's two allocations sitting there that aren't filled, and there's no money going to them that are budgeted for. So we, you can see all that on what Ms. Odom's department has been keeping. And yes, this is very helpful, names on it especially. So we do.
Thank you so much.
That's the motion, and not second as I.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And then the last one is discussion input and action on information from school board attorney regarding the United Games. If you'll remember, Ms. Vicki Roach spoke to the board, was it last month?
Two meetings ago.
About a way for clubs and groups to raise money.
If I can speak to that.
Absolutely.
So ordinarily, the board would not get involved in a fundraising decision, like approving a candy bar vendor, or candles, or anything like that. But this is such a unique type of a fundraiser that I thought it was important for the board to determine and weigh in on if this was something that the board wanted to have in the district. And, you know, I'm not in a position to say good or bad or indifferent about it. I did go out to the other school board attorneys in the state of Florida to see if they have heard of this group, and apparently this organization, United Games, is in other districts or has at least approached other districts. I also understand that sometimes they are in high schools, and maybe the district is not aware of it on a global level. And I also did some additional research. I sent you a link to some of the frequently asked questions that United Games answers for people who have questions. One of those is, you know, is this gambling? United Games' position is that it is not gambling, but it makes you, the question nevertheless exists, is it gambling or is it not gambling? There are tokens involved. There is, there are ways to make money on the school level, and then there are other tiers, from what I understand, and it is a gray area, I believe. Many, or I should say, at least a couple of other attorneys, school board attorneys around the state have concluded that it is not in the best interest of districts to participate in this fundraising organization. But it appears that there are other districts who do participate. So I don't, I don't know if you would do right or do wrong necessarily because right now it's more of a question, and there's not an answer to say yes or no that this United Games is good or bad. And I think at this stage legally, it is up to the board, it's a, it's a board discretion. Do you want this? Do you not want this? Do you want to have time to see how it shakes out in other districts? And all of the above is okay. I don't have a solid response that it is allowed or disallowed.
Well, has anybody heard anything whether any of the organizations in Putnam County that are using, have they made any money? I haven't heard anything.
They're just gathering a group of people so they can make it bigger and sell it to bigger games at some point. It's, it's a money-making scheme.
I know, I just don't understand.
We might make a few thousand dollars, but if we get to making 10,000 dollars a year, then they're gonna fold it over into their pocket, and they're done with us, and they still got their clientele base. I, I didn't like it, still don't like it.
Same here.
Too good to be true, it usually is. It's what McKinley told me.
Yeah, I think we should back off and see how it shakes out. I think we'll be, maybe not surprised, but I think we'll find that it, it does not remain successful because of the ethical question that we don't know, or the legal, ethical, whatever. So my, my thing, you don't want to, Nikki, you took it's all right?
Well, I just don't know how, at this point, I know there's these little, like the interlock and weightlifting, and I know Crescent City sports teams. It's like you send out a, kind of like Candy Crush, hey, play this game. I don't know how else to explain it.
I guess I don't.
And they've sent them, like, I think they've been.
Tokens or something.
Sent out to like, hey, play this game, and we'll get money. Or, you know.
There are always fundraising events that take place.
I just don't know how you back off, is all I'm saying. You know what I'm saying?
They're really beyond our knowledge and, and things that we do. I mean, they could have a shotgun raffle, and we wouldn't know about it.
Right.
I mean, really, you wouldn't have a gun at school, but.
Right.
Those kind of things happen and occur every district in America. People do little, little splinter groups and all, they have their own fundraising methods. The only thing I really have seen us stop, that was a big moneymaker, was having kids stand in the intersections with buckets and gather money.
That went too safe.
That, well, you know, whether it was safe or not, was the kids in interlocking certainly benefited greatly from having the one red light in the middle of town. But, yeah, it was, the board felt strongly years ago about that and stopped it.
Well, I, I just don't understand, if we said, no, we can't do it, I mean, how are we gonna keep people from playing that game?
Yeah.
Well, if you, if you notify the vendor, I don't know, could we send cease and desist? And I mean, they should be able to cut the links to the games.
But then, I mean, honestly, I feel like it would be great if the boosters, like, I mean, I feel like if, I don't know how we say we.
Can we give it to the end of the year?
You're liable to have a booster come in and, and have been doing this for two years now, and we didn't know about it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it just started, so they couldn't have been doing it.
But I, I mean, I like the idea of our clubs making money, not necessarily our.
How do they make money? There's no money exchanged. So this company has a great game that the kids are gonna want to play, and there's ads on it, and they sell the ads, is what they do.
Yeah.
That's where the money comes. No, the company does, the company.
Right. In addition to the, the watching of ads, which gets you more tokens.
Tokens.
You can also purchase more tokens, and you can win more tokens if you make predictions on certain games, and you're correct in the predictions. That's my understanding of how the game operates.
So.
How much percentage of the money, I mean, how?
It's very clear to me.
Yeah, it's not clear at all.
Creating a clientele to gamble later is kind of where it leads. Now, that's the argument, that's the counter, that I think we didn't like as a board, that it could precipitate into a form like that at some point. I don't want to do anything that teaches kids to gamble on games, you know?
Okay. For clarification, when this was first presented to us, we had a vote. It was 3-2, and it doesn't matter who 3, who 2 was. What did we vote yea to?
We said we would try it out till we got more information.
Okay. So in other words, somewhere out there, it, there's a strong possibility it is happening.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
So now, the question is, based on what our board attorney has brought back to us, where do we go now? Because if this is, remember, we are the stewards of our, of our district, making sure that our children are safe, or we're protecting them from things that, that may be out there to get.
We did reach out to Ms. Roach again, and I understand she had no additional information about any of the questions that we asked her. But my question is about these games. What are the goods and services that are being purchased here? I mean, I mean, it sounds like multi-level marketing to me.
It is.
So there's no real goods or service that anyone is purchasing at all?
I have confidence that the superintendent will communicate with his principals and staff, that the board does not favor this type of, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to try to develop some kind of catch-all policy.
Yeah, I don't either.
Because we already have, we already have a catch-all that says, we can, we reserve the right to punish behavior that's subversive to good order in schools. So Rick, I guess, as a board member, and maybe the rest can express it as well, I would just have to rely on you to kind of just.
And I think it's good for you to go on record stating yea or nay whether you're in support of this or not. Because I know it's hard to control it, but at least you can go on the record about what your feelings are about it.
And I would concur in that, that for yes or no, either way, it's important to have the will of the board on record.
I'll make a motion no.
I make a, I second that.
Can we give a little more, sorry, clarification? Because I do not want to go and say, this is absolutely prohibited, and make our attorney try to spend hours and hours and, you know, could be litigation, or taking these links back. I don't want to see any extra resources spent on it. I just would say, I feel like we, we're not gonna support it, maybe?
Our board secretary, who would be Mr. Searcy.
Is a complete citizen.
Is going to be in charge of how he follows our no recommendation on this. And I don't think it's necessary to get any more specific.
Just say no.
Just say no.
There is a.
Just say no.
There's an agreement that I believe was signed already. So in the motion, if it is to say no to this, I would ask that it be included in the motion that the board is terminating the agreement, and that is, that is permitted in the text.
Well, I withdraw my second. Kathy, you want?
I withdraw my, my original motion and change it to say that the board agrees that United.
Games.
Games is not the type of fundraiser we want in our school system. And we also hereby declare the contract with them null and void.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Kath, Ms. Jordison?
Nikki, one way or the other.
I said aye.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Well, I just think in light of what our attorney has found out, that, you know, we have got to.
I know. I hate not to support, I mean, it's not.
I know, but we support so many other things, Nikki. I mean, we'll hopefully, we'll support every other fundraiser they have, they come up with. I just am so unsure about it.
You have enough bases.
I just don't even really understand what it does.
To begin with, so.
Okay, now, the fun part. It's time for board reports from our board members, and I'd like to start with Ms. Gilliard.
You started with me last time, so I defer.
I'd like to start with Ms. Jordison.
Okay, everybody wake up, I got a long list.
Okay.
All right, first I want to commend Board Docs. Board Docs is the way we get to the agenda and all the attention, attachments. And for any parents watching, go to the Putnam County Schools, PutnamSchools.org website, and go to school board, and go to school board meeting and agendas. And there's a logo, it's black and green, it says Board Docs, and right under there in tiny, tiny letters, it says, "Log into Putnam County School District Board Docs." And then you get the choice of authenticating or enter public site. You'll enter the public site, you'll see minutes from every one of the board meetings that we've had, agendas, all the attachments. And this is the general public I'm talking about. And nobody comes to our board meetings, but they watch them. And wouldn't it be more intelligent to know what we're gonna be discussing at a time? And also, if you have an issue, you'll know it, that you want to get in touch with us. So anyway, that was my first little thing. Truancy, I spoke with Mr. Weaver and Ms. Odom about truancy. First of all, some numbers. We started banging on truancy harder in 2012-13. In 2012-13, we had 255,970 absent days by students. When you divide that by 180 days, that means 1,422 kids were absent every day, on an average, every day. Two years later, after this truancy effort, which we're not doing right, I mean, we could do it better. So the truancy effort, two years later, resulted in 159,000 days, which was 888 a day. Now, I'm proposing we get Travis another personnel person because they're backed up with the truancy cases getting to court. Kristy can't handle what she's got, let alone if we're gonna push this harder. And if you take the 1,422 absent a day, and then you take the 888 and subtract it, that's $3 million in FTE, if their butts are in the seats, cheeks are in the seats, when the FTE count goes on. And truancy, if it's scaring the parents, no matter what it's doing, our push on truancy is working, and it could bring money into the district. So I just wanted to bring that up because, I mean, that's real numbers, certainly enough to cover one employee. And it can bring millions into the district of FTE. Okay, could we print on two sides of paper? I have a $450 printer, and it, it defaults, and it prints on two sides of the paper. It just, it's a personal, drive-me-crazy thing. I don't know how much we spend in paper, but if we could cut it in half, or even down by a third, I think we'd save some money. Okay, cars and who's driving them, and buses too. I'd really like a list. I'd really like a list of cars and who is driving them. Because we had missing cars a couple of years ago and then when I asked.
Did we not get that?
But nobody, it just was a list of cars.
Oh, it wasn't who was driving it.
We don't know where they are or who has them or whatever. And I'd still like to see a list of cars and who's assigned to them or are they sitting there?
Some people, they would, some cars will have multiple drivers though.
Well, that's fine. I'd just like to see that. Okay, I think what Jenkins has done is a great, great idea. I really commend them for their vision. Charter school financial statements on the agenda. It drives me crazy because it's not an action item, blah, blah, blah. The thing is, the charter schools, based on their grades, have to submit financial records to us, us, once a month or once a quarter or whatever. And then our finance department looks at them for us and I guess puts them on the agenda after you look at them. So my suggestion is you just put a little, the finance department has rude, reviewed the attached agenda from Edge High School, cover letter and put it on the consent agenda instead of hanging off the end of the, you know what I'm saying? So if you could do it that way, we could keep track. Okay, we're seeing Edge every month like we're supposed to. And we're seeing, you know, the other ones that, oh, hey, we haven't gotten something from past what's going on. So that would be very, very helpful if we could do it that way. And then we're voting on something. We're voting to adopt it because our finance director said it's approved. Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate very much the board giving me permission to go to Washington DC, but I've decided not to go. When I heard two-day registration fee just for the conference, $700, and I wanted to go the third day, the day before, that was another three. $1,000 for a three-day, and that does not include the room and meals. The room was 200 and high 200s a day. And, and I'm just, I'm not spending our taxpayers' mon- and can you imagine there'd be thousands of school board members from all over the country spending this money that should go into the kitty? It just, it makes me mad.
They may have a lot more money than we do.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't, to me, it doesn't matter. It's just crazy. Have it out at a ranch in the Midwest somewhere where they pay a couple hundred dollars a head, we get fed in a bunk or something. Anyway, um, I'm very much against payroll deduction. We already have United Way trying to get payroll deductions out of our employees. The Jim Paget's organization.
Foundation.
The foundation's trying to get money out of our employees.
They are.
They are. I mean, enough. We're trying to pay healthcare costs for our employees. I don't think we should ask them for any more payroll deductions, but that's just me, one out of five. Status of the Campbell Building sale, nothing?
Um, Mr. Headstrom from our office has prepared the contract between the, uh, board and the Realtor. And I believe that it is completed and sent over to Mr. Galloway, I believe is his name. And, um, that will continue forward.
Great.
So it is on track and on schedule.
Is there a, we're giving you this to list for six months or a year or there's no time? Just kind of month to month?
Looking for Sandy. Um, I believe it is a 12-month, uh, contract.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
I'm sure whatever you guys are working on, it's fine. I just wanted to know the status. And lastly, Rhonda was on the consent agenda for approval for out-of-state travel. She mentioned to me she's never gone out of state on the taxpayers' dime. As president of the Florida Association of School Business Officials, and that's pretty impressive, she is the president. This is completely paid for by the organization. They want her there and they're paying all expenses. She just needed permission to get out of the county.
Yeah.
Like, like the guys with the ankle bracelets or something.
They won't monitor you while you're out.
I just wanted kudos. It's really impressive that we have the president of this association here in our district.
Absolutely.
I'm done, believe it or not.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
I'll go next.
Mr. Buckles?
Um, I would like to start off, I normally don't have a very big report, but I would like to congratulate, uh, everyone involved on a smooth transition in bringing Mr. Searcy on and Ms. Gilliard and, and, uh, I, I just think it's been very, very pleasant. I'm particularly proud of, uh, some of the moves that I see with, uh, Thomas and Andy and, and, and some of the people that have gone on and are working in schools. And we've got, we've got some very caring and fine people that work for us in the district. So I just, I'm real anxious to see how it continues to unfold and I'm very pleased to see that. I was most, uh, disturbed and something I've felt very strongly about for quite a while and, and it's one reason that I don't like, I, I've never been in favor of the buses in the predawn hours in the outlying areas of Georgetown, Willacca, Clifton Road, Lake Estates, Bostwick, you'd name it. Uh, when I saw the article that, uh, Christie is working on about human trafficking, I don't know that you've seen this, I know that there was a big bust in Polk County that even had a, I was told had a school board representative tied up in a big bust, hundreds of people tied up in that. But, uh, Christie is not here and she didn't feel well. And Travis, you may know more about this than I do, but, uh, human trafficking is, is exactly what it's.
Sounds like it.
It sounds like. It is parents selling their children for drugs and items and, and very horrible things that happen and occur. And it is happening here in Putnam County. Um, I will, I have contributed to Mr. Paget's foundation to try to get children, you know, children, uh, in our pre-k programs, but this is a problem that's been going on, I guess, since mankind started, but it's, it's horrible and it is much bigger than people really know. And, uh, if Christie were here, I would ask her to say something, but she felt so bad, she left. But I've been keeping up with her on Facebook and some of the things that she's working on. And she feels very strongly about it and it's something that we in the schools and our teachers and our food service and our bus drivers see. And I, I think it's, it's one thing that I know the superintendent would feel very strongly, if you see something, say something. If you're one of our employees and you see something that just isn't right, say something to somebody.
Well, is that something maybe all our employees should get training on?
Well, I, I think that they've probably had the required training, but, uh, there will, there may be an opportunity as Christie works with this program and with the circuit courts to develop more training. I know years ago, we had our bus drivers on a, on a watch where they would look for suspicious characters. And I'm sure they still do, but it's just something we need to maybe, uh, build on and work with because there are some, there are some bad people in the world.
Well, Carl Coulson came and visited me recently about that, if you know Carl. And there's actually a walk or some type of event coming up.
It is, yeah.
Coming up.
And Christie, I think, is involved in that.
Yeah.
It is. It's a walk, I know that's.
And we're actually going to show a movie in, in the boardroom and then a walk will take place after that. But I forget the date of that, but that's coming up.
Yeah, I can. January.
January 11th, 5:00 PM.
Here.
The walk starts across Memorial Bridge at 5:30.
And the movie, I forget the name of the movie, but the movie will be held in here.
Yeah, I listened to the.
Chosen.
Chosen.
Yes.
Chosen, thank you.
I listened to some of the, the talking earlier about the kids and the food and, you know, and the parents and, you know, I go back to a child that I picked up right before Hurricane Matthew that was standing in the road in the rain and he was all of a first grade age. And I tried to find out who he was, called, I guess Travis or Ray Streets or the school and found out who it was, went to the house. I have not yet seen a parent or an adult for this first grader and took that child to school. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on that kids just, they, they, sometimes they beat the odds, but we've got to kind of be there for them. And I know Rick is on it and I would like to know if there's anything us as board members can do to support Christie in this, in this, uh, event. So I'm through with that and school time's kind of tied into that. That has been my only concern from the get-go is that the abnormal number of sexual predators we have living in Putnam County throughout and some of the kids in the predawn hours. But, uh, we just, that's why if we're going to look at changing more school times, we're going to have to get more eyes and ears involved in what's happening out around bus stops and things. And last, uh, Sandy or one of you mentioned the foundation or the payroll deduction, I guess it was Kathy. I, I got with Mr. Paget and I'm signed up to do the payroll deduction each month now to support the pre-k. You can't do everything. Yeah, you know, you get, you get your little favorite things and I know as superintendent mine was March of Dimes because you just can't do it all. But, uh, I'm, I'm really optimistic that you got a lot of great things coming together here. So with that, uh, I'll pass it on to the next board member.
Miss Cummings?
Um, I want to, um, the superintendent's Putnam Pulse, I do love that weekly. Thank you so much for sending that out. It's really a nice, um, summary of things going on in the district. And of course I want to address the 9% increase in graduation rates. What a wonderful thing to see and amazing that we're one of the highest in the states as far as improvement. So I appreciate all the high school work. I mean, I don't know how to, even who to thank, but it's, it's working and, and I appreciate it. I mean, this was something that, you know, I know the graduation coaches were just hired, so this will only improve. But I appreciate all the, um, efforts that have been made in the past year and on that graduation rate increasing, cause that's a huge, um, public interest. So I appreciate all the, uh, work that's gone into that. And I do want to say that I appreciate, um, I'm not sure as far as payroll deduction, I feel like it is, we had, should have a choice and I understand.
You can either do it or not do it.
Right. I think, I think our standard is if we have 25 people sign up, then it automatically, cause we do have the Humane Society and the, um, the United Way. And so I do want to say I do support the, the feed, the need just because it does stay in the school district as, as does the foundation. So I'm going to have to, to do too. And United Way does also, yeah. So there's, I mean, there's just, I feel like it's only fair to offer, um, that as a, as an option for payroll deduction. So I do appreciate all the support we get for that. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Okay, well, you've, Sandy, that's right, you wouldn't go and I forgot about you.
She's quiet as a church mouse over here.
Okay. Uh, well, most of what I had written has already been said, but again, uh, kudos to Superintendent Searcy for Putnam Pulse. I read all of the great things that are happening in our district. And one question, is that available to our parents?
No, but we, we can talk about how to do that.
All right. They need to, to be able to read these things that are happening throughout the district. I, I was just pleased to read it.
Can you make that happen? Yeah, good.
Then this morning to pick up the paper and see one of our board members and several of the people that I know and the young lady that was here earlier with the backpacks, feed the need for kids, uh, certainly I was, I was pleased and want to say hats off to you, Mrs. Cummings, for being a part of that. And, and it's just great because it's, it's, it does take an entire village to, to raise the child. Um, I want to say I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And it's not about being able to give the biggest or get the biggest, biggest gift. It's about the love that we show one to another. And in closing, I just want to share this thought that's taken from Teachers Touch of Life Forever. It just says, who knows what one person can be if given every opportunity to learn, to grow, to make mistakes and start over. A teacher can be the beginning of this process.
Very, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, like Sandy said, many of the things that I wanted to mention have already been stated. I'm thrilled to death about the graduation rates and we're just going to keep going up. Um, I know you've probably all seen on Facebook or, um, seen little clips on the news, St. Augustine Newspaper about our sensitive Santa, um, that we worked started. I think this year was the second or third year, fourth year? Third year, yeah. Um, and it's soon to be, um, on First Coast News and it, it's just the most heartwarming story about one of our students and, and, uh, our sensitive Santa, Mr. Lee West. He just does a wonderful job. Um, so keep your eye out for that. Also wanted to just tell you that I survived my first spelling bee, being the moderator, and now I'm in great demand. I've gotten some more calls, they want me. So I'm going to be doing that again in the new year and it was a lot of fun. We got some smart kids in Putnam County. I was so worried that I couldn't pronounce all the words, so I went on Google and there's this thing, you can put in the word and they tell you how to say it.
With a southern accent?
Well, no. It didn't quite have the southern accent.
New York neither, eh?
Yeah, no. Um, the superintendent and I have been discussing, um, and David, don't you say a word.
Oh, I wouldn't.
Having a retreat to, um, start working on our strategic plan, our vision, our new vision and our mission. And we have a new superintendent and those are things that we need to do. Um, a couple of good dates, and I want y'all to be thinking about this. Uh, the afternoon of Friday, the 27th of January and Saturday, the 28th of January.
I'll be in Alabama. But that's okay, it's just deer season up there.
And the second one.
I might skip, I'll, I'll come.
Will you get that first date again?
Uh, January 27th, that afternoon and all day Saturday, the 28th.
I won't be in Washington.
Okay.
Okay, well, good.
Then the other one, David, maybe you won't be hunting unless it's spring gobbler season or something.
My granddaughter, she'll love it. They go deer hunting.
February 10th, Friday, the afternoon of February 10th and February the 11th.
That would be good.
Would that be more suitable?
He's available.
He's available, thank you. Thank you. So, um, I'm going to be emailing you and making sure those dates are okay.
Is it out of town or in town?
We'd like to stay as close as possible, but we don't want to be here.
Yeah.
Well, and not for any.
Or home.
I didn't mean it the way that sounded.
It's not a rural golf village, there's a golf course there.
Well, I mean, you know.
I'm just kidding.
Robin'd be nice too. I'm in that beautiful home out there. We've, we're throwing around some ideas.
Cool.
Um, we could go to the Gaylord Palms, you know, but no, I'm just kidding. Okay, um, the last thing I'm going to say, and I know people are going to throw rotten tomatoes at me, uh, people on this board are probably going to throw rotten tomatoes at me, but I promised some citizens in Putnam County I would bring this up, so I'm going to bring it up. And I think that we need to have one meeting a month at night. And let me tell you what, David, I knew it.
I did it, I'm good at saying, let's do them all at night, I don't care.
And I want to read something that just really hit home with me because when I was talking to this person about it, I said, well, they tried that, you know, and it didn't work. Nobody came to the meetings. And then that person said, y'all, they didn't try very long. And let me read what she said. "It has to be tried over a long period of time to make an accurate assessment. We tend to do things for a bit and then decide it doesn't work. The social media has the potential to make a difference. Parents in the community are used to not being able to attend a meeting, so it takes a huge systemic effort to change a mindset. This system needs to work very diligently to make parents, students, school personnel and community members feel that their voice counts. That isn't the message we send when meetings occur at the time when most people are working. Many school personnel cannot attend. The message that is being sent is that input from all the stakeholders is not important." So.
Now, David, when we had those meetings, we did Melrose one meeting and then we did
Now, David, when we had those meetings, we did Melrose one meeting, and then we did Crescent City and up, and that had its problems.
Yeah, I'm not interested in that.
Right here.
Right here on a regular basis.
And we, you know, even before my time, they did it, and they did it all over the county. And it just, sometimes you'd have an issue pertinent to a particular school, and you would have a crowd show up. But normally, here's the problem, the superintendent has to rely on his staff to come. They work all week long, and then they can't go be with their family at church or wherever it is they're going to go, and you've got to have staff available to answer questions. And that in itself creates a vast amount of problems, but-
Well, they do it in every other county in the state.
Do they?
Yeah, I've looked at-
One a month, like once, 3:30?
Well, most of them do it, every meeting at night.
5:30 or 6:00?
Every meeting at night.
When we say night, is it 5:30, 7:00? I'm just curious.
People get off work at 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock?
I'm just one vote, you guys do what you want.
I know, but-
No, I would stand on my head if we got parent involvement, I would wear-
But I don't think we can go five months and say, well, nobody came. I mean, it's got to become regular, it's got to be in their mindset that they can come to a night meeting. But I want y'all to think about that because-
I agree.
I'd like to put it up, you know, put it up for a vote.
I feel bad for the staff though, that's, that's the problem, these people sitting here that want to go home.
We can let them come in late the next morning.
Right, or, you know, if they need to get their toes done, they can leave early.
Superintendent has, and just in all honesty, he has gone to a system now of area superintendents. Any complaint that a board member gets that they pass on to the superintendent, if it occurs in a specific region of Putnam County, that will be put on to somebody who will personally see to it. So that compensates a great deal for much of what we're talking about. But if it's, if you think there's that big a need, I don't, that'll touch up the board. I've done it so many times that I really don't think it'll be, there'll be times-
But you didn't do it for long?
There are times that, like if you have a popular principal that's being terminated, you'll have to move to the CLO auditorium, and you'll fill it up, and everybody will be- Yeah, I mean, I can think of times that we've done stuff like that. So, you know, it's up to you guys, whatever you want to do.
Well, I just think their, public perception is, we really don't care what they think because we're not having it a time when they can attend.
That's right, on the one side, we can, we say we want them, and then we exclude them.
Oh, yeah, I completely agree. I just feel like, I know that, and I can't remember, Mr. Townsend had later meetings, I want to say 5 o'clock?
But even 5 o'clock's not early enough, I mean, not late enough.
Okay. Because I was, you know, I would, on the board, I would look out there and see, did we have an increased attendance? And we did, and just, again, the staff, but by all means, if it'll get more involvement, then I just, again, help.
You couldn't do 5:30, I mean, is that, why don't we check?
If I were a parent, I'd want seven so I could feed the kids before.
Been involved by child, I'd be on somebody before they had to come to school board, but-
Well, how do teachers get down here, David?
The principals usually work out a solution. And if we have a bunch of kids that need to come to a ceremony, we can, we can load them on a bus and bring them down there and work an hour.
Well, I just think it's something we need to do, and we don't need to do it for four meetings and say, oh, nobody's coming. I think it's something that, it's the status quo, it's standard, that's when we're going to meet, and we meet then.
Well, that sounds great.
So-
I just, my only comment is that in the past two years, trying to do parent involvement and PTO and feeding them and giving them free food and childcare, and all I found-
Nikki, I know that just as well as within the high schools.
And I'm telling you, if people want to come, they will make a way. If it's a priority, they're going to be here. And that's all I'm saying, that I've tried the morning meetings, the afternoon, the dinner. We've switched everything, and we have 800 kids at this school, and maybe get 10 parents. It's just reality.
We got it, Plac.
Yeah, and that's a huge one, this is the only PTO, there's only two in the district left. And I'm just telling you that I'm not against it, I'm just saying from my experience, and I try really hard for the last two years, I'm telling you everything. Because the other thing is childcare, Jane, if they're-
They can bring their kids with them. I mean, if they can't find somebody, why not?
Okay.
Here's another thing, if you got-
Well, I wouldn't either, but, you know.
I, I mean, I'm not-
Just give it some thought.
Yeah, I'm not opposed, I'm just want-
Okay, Charlie?
Everything is going well in the legal department, nothing more to report?
Thank you, Mr. Douglas, and Dr. Surrancey?
Thank you, I just want to reiterate how proud we are of our graduation rate and the increase. And, you know, our goal was four percentage points per year, so we more than doubled that. But kudos to our district staff who worked so hard, our graduation coaches, our principals, counselors, teachers, so many people had a part in that, and we all need to celebrate that. And I actually spoke at the Chamber of Commerce yesterday and brought that up. And our business community, I think, is very ecstatic about that because that's the thing that outside businesses look at, is that graduation rate. I've been talking about publicity and getting the word out about our board meetings. I know, thanks to Asia, she runs some articles from time to time about some agenda items. And I've made it a standing appointment at our local radio station, Marshia back there. Every Tuesday of the board meeting, I'm going by the radio station and talking about items that are on the board agenda. And talked about the calendar and the change in the Jenkins schedule and so forth. So again, we're all trying to advertise that so we can involve our community. And also, I've been visiting all the schools in the district. I think I'm almost finished, but I'm talking to all the faculties, expressing what our vision is and what our expectations are, and that's going real well. And thanks to our area directors, they are also joining me because I want the faculty and the staff at the schools to know who their area directors are. And I told them, we are bringing the district to them. We want them to understand we are here to serve them and help them be successful. And I told them, their success is the area director's success because they're going to be personally responsible for helping their schools succeed. And finally, we've made yet another administrative change, a very positive change. As you know, we had an opening for our ESC director, and I want to introduce to you Mr. Andy Burnett. If Andy would stand up and welcome. Andy is a veteran of the school district, and most recently served as an assistant principal at Placah High School. And it's been a very positive move, Andy's hit the ground running, and we're looking for great things to happen with our exceptional lead department. So welcome, Andy, glad to have you, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, now, do I need to mention Edge New Charter High School financial statement? Okay, well, we're done then.
You've got to hit the gavel.
I'm getting ready to. Our meeting is adjourned.
Good job.